All right, so it is 7:00. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order and welcome everybody for joining us here this evening. My first order is, or my first request is that you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic your which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for joining us and also for those later on, on YouTube who may be watching. Just a friendly reminder, if you have cell phones or electronic devices with you this evening, please put them on airplane mode or on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, I'd like to make a few introductions. So, I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left, that direction, is Councilmember Pam Mortenson, Mike Molitor, John Trumperland, Shannon Bruce, and on the end, we have our, with WSB, our city engineer, Allison Fausky. Also with us this evening's staff, we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist, our Director of Administration, Cassandra Taber, and sitting right next to her in the first row is our Public Works Superintendent, Gary Peters. And then on the other row in the front, we have Adam Gabois, close enough, right? Okay, thanks.
Gabois.
He's Gabois, with WSB. I will get it right one of these days. And then to my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, and sitting in for Ron Beatty this evening, we have our city attorney with Kennedy engraved, Andrew Biggerstaff, and then on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So, those are all the introductions. So with that, next is approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve, or do we have any additions or changes? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and second by Ms. Bruce. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. This evening, we have a special presentation for one of our esteemed staff members, and I'm gonna hand it over to Chief Falls at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. One of the most rewarding things I get to do as a department head is to acknowledge outstanding performance of staff. And as the police chief, typically, I'm doing that for police department staff, and tonight is a little bit different because I'm actually doing this for a Public Works staff member, Trevor Barrett. So, with that, I guess I'll start with just a brief summary of the event leading up to this award, and then we'll, I'll call you up to the podium and we'll actually present the award. So, on January 30th of this year, shortly after 7:00 AM, we had, as you know, some brutally cold temperatures, 30 below actual air temperatures, and in excess of 50 degrees below zero wind chills. Trevor was working on that day for Public Works, and he noticed a man down on the sidewalk out in these brutally cold temperatures. And I should point out that this was at 7:25 in the morning, so this is a time where there's a lot of work traffic going to and from. Nobody called, we didn't receive any other calls. Nobody noticed this gentleman down on the sidewalk in the brutally cold temperatures. And so, Trevor's awareness and quick action, he called right away. Officers were dispatched and got there fairly quickly, and found this man obviously not dressed appropriately, he was barely conscious and in critical condition. So, time was certainly of the essence here. Trevor assisted officers in getting this gentleman into a warm squad car because the responding ambulance was several minutes away, and seconds counted in this matter, or in this matter, for sure. And so, with that, this individual, as I said, was in critical condition and seconds counted. And without a doubt, if Trevor had not seen this man down, he would've had minutes to live. So, I'd like to personally thank you for your efforts and your awareness, because lots and lots of people, as I said, were driving by and nobody noticed. So, what you did was truly outstanding, and your quick actions, without a doubt, saved this man's life. So, with that, I'd like to call Mayor Whelan and Trevor up to the podium, please.
So I'm gonna present this to you, Trevor, and I'm just gonna read it real quickly. I need this. There you go. On this award, it says, "On January 30th, 2019, at 7:25 AM, Minatrista Public Works employee, Trevor Barrett, was on duty driving on along County Road 110 North. Trevor observed a male down on the sidewalk. At the time, the temperature was 30 degrees below zero with a wind chill in excess of 50 degrees below zero. The male was not dressed appropriately for the conditions and had been there for some time. The individual was in critical condition as he had a severely decreased level of consciousness. Trevor's observance and quick response with a doubt, without a doubt, saved the life of this individual." So we, as a city and council, would like to thank you for a job well done.
Congratulations.
(applause) You guys just stand together. Gary's getting it. All right, let me take a couple. One, two, three. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Next, we're moving on to persons to be heard. We do have one individual signed up, it's Eric Funderberg on Cedar Point. If you can come to the podium, and you need to state your name and address for the record. And you all have three minutes to address the council on an issue that you have.
All right, thank you. I'm the mayor, councilmembers and staff. Eric Funderberg, 5345 Cedar Point Road. I was here last year, almost about this time starting, and I was one of the advocates for the short-term rental situation that we were having here in the community. I happen to have one next door to me, as I think many of you may be aware. Even though that ban was passed, or the ordinance was passed, months later, the neighbors weren't all that happy with me, as you can imagine, they kinda came over, and one of them in a, kind of a drunken mood, and said, "We're gonna do it anyhow." And I was like, "Well, I think he's just probably had too much to drink, and we'll see what's gonna happen." But as I look now at vacation rental by owner, Airbnb, and MiniStay, they are renting their house out. And I just wanted to bring it to the mayor's attention, the city's attention, and the councilmembers' attention. What they're planning to do on this is, they say in their write-up, that a 30-day lease is required on this. So they're asking everyone to sign a 30-day lease. Yet, they dis, like, we called, or we actually sent an email and saying, you know, "How does this work?" What they do is, they, you know, you sign a 30-day lease, but you only stay there for four days, or something like that. And then they go out and they rent it to someone else that signs another 30-day lease, and then another 30-day lease. So essentially, they're not really respecting the ordinance as it's written. So I wanted to bring it to the attention of the city, and I guess I'm gonna ask what would be the enforcement action. I know that when I read the code, it has misdemeanors and stuff like that. And this may not be the place to get into that, but I'm just trying to prepare because I think this is gonna be a problem. Right now, they only have, they've had one rental last month, they have one this month, so they're actually in compliance with the 30-day windows, as I understand it. But come July, they have multiple people coming and going in there, and I imagine it's only gonna get worse. So last year, there was a concern about, "Well, what do we do with all these poor people that book these places and are expecting a vacation?" And we kinda, the decision was made by council to push this thing to December 31st, I think, for the beginning of this ordinance. I'm a little fearful that if this doesn't get looked at soon, that we're gonna run into the same situation, that there's some, you know, innocent person from out of town that's planning on coming in with a vacation. And I'm not sure what happens on that. So I guess I'm just asking for an awareness on that, and if anybody could direct me on what I should be doing when this process happens over there to make sure. It's hard to document, you know, you gotta make sure. But you can see people coming and going, you can tell when new groups come in. And incidentally, these were the same people that came up in this very same podium and said, "No, no, we're law-abiding, we follow all the rules, we're gonna make sure that we're not gonna be an inconvenience to the neighborhood." And then, once we pass, the ordinance is passed, obviously, they're not so law-abiding. First thing we did was look for ways to kinda get around it. So, with that, I just thank you very much.
So, first thing, what I would recommend, obviously, we're not gonna take action tonight. We don't usually under persons to be heard. But also, any issues with the property next door, definitely call and report it to the police and file a complaint, if you will.
So like a 911, do I call the police, something like that? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's an emergency, you know, to do that. You know, I'm not a 911 caller, type of thing.
Sure, you don't have to hesitate to call 911, but you can call our direct dial as well. Either way, after hours, it goes to the same place. So, either way is fine.
And then, at some point, the city council will have to have some kinda discussion on how we wanna address this issue.
I don't anticipate that they have a lot of problems until, you know, many, people are gonna start coming.
Correct, probably during the summer months, yeah, yeah. And again, there too, if there's noise issues and all of that, definitely be sure and you address the police on that. And so, again, we'll have to be talking about this to see what we wanna do, how we proceed from here.
I have a question for you. Did you say that they hadn't violated the 30-day term of their rental yet? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
They haven't, except when you look at, like, MiniStay or Airbnb, you can see the blockouts of time, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that that was.
Right, so they're not in violation.
So they're not in violation, so just make sure when you call and report something to the police that they are in violation.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm fearful that that'll be, I'm making this, I'm making, you know, it's gonna be May 9th, and it's gonna be sometime where I do the calendar, and then how do we know when the last group came out? It's like, you know what I'm saying, it's not, like, there's no one to keep track of the last groups except for myself and notes, which I'm happy to do, but at the same time, and I don't mind policing it, but then, like, where does that go as far as the misdemeanor charge? Would I come over with my little clipboard and say, "So you had somebody in there this night, this night, and this night?" I'm just a little mixed up on how I can help really enforce it.
Yeah, I would talk to Chief Falls about that.
Yeah, I think, well, again, we'll have to have a discussion, and I think the chief will have to get involved. And you might wanna give him a call, you know, tomorrow or whenever, and talk to him about that too. So, but thank you, Mr. Funderberg. All right. Okay, we have no more people signed up under persons to be heard, so we will move on to our consent agenda items. We have consent agenda item A, which is approve the work session meeting minutes from January 7th, 2019. Approve our work session meeting minutes from February 4th, 2019. Approve our regular meeting minutes from February 4th, 2019. D is approve our claims. E is approve a reimbursement resolution for budgeted 2019 equipment certificates. F is approve our step increase for Ryan Wagner, police officer. And G is approve a status change for Ryan Forniak from, to permanent community service officer. Are there any ones you'd like to remove?
I'd like to remove A, the work session minutes from January 7th.
Okay. Any other ones?
I'd like to remove E.
Okay. Okay, so that would leave B, C, D, F, and G. Is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce and second by Mr. Trumperland. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we move on to approve our work session meeting minutes, Ms. Bruce.
Yes, on page four of our packet, you'll find the January 7th work session minutes that I requested the city clerk to revisit the wording to better reflect, to paraphrase and reflect the meaning and context of what I said. And she reviewed that and did her best to do it, and I requested the audio and actually listened to the audio tape and transcribed it for everyone, and I'll pass that out just in case you didn't have a chance to read that in the email that Mr. Barone sent today. Words are important, and there are words that were paraphrased in these minutes that I didn't say that have far different meanings than what I intended. And one of the words in, well, before I go into that, I also wanna make sure that I'm not criticizing our city clerk and her paraphrasing capabilities, because I know how difficult it is to follow complex issues and conversations and paraphrase them the way they should be paraphrased, and follow everything everybody's saying. So, this is just a correction. I transcribed the audio, and then I put a paraphrase underneath the two comments that I'd like to change. And I don't wanna take more time than is necessary on this. So I'll just read the paraphrase on the TIF comment, I think you've all had a chance to read that. The paraphrase is just, Bruce commented, she wondered if we constrain ourselves more by establishing a policy on TIF instead of saying, instead of just saying something general like the city would consider TIF. That paraphrase accurately represents what I said in the transcription above. And the Ag Preserve comment is there, I won't read the total transcription, but the paraphrase on the Ag Preserve comment is, Bruce wanted to understand the eligibility requirements of Ag Preserve. She thinks it's important, we encourage people to apply for Ag Preserve to preserve Minatrista's role character. That paraphrased, that paraphrase accurately represents what I said above. And I read these paraphrases over the phone with Mr. Barone this morning, he agreed they represented the actual verbatim statement that I made. And with that, I would like to move that these two paraphrases be substituted in the January 7th work minute, work session minutes.
So Ms. Bruce, one of the concerns I have is, we can't really paraphrase. I understand what you're saying, and I understand, and I think we all understand what you, what you meant, but when we're talking about minutes, we have to be accurate in what was said, because the city could actually get in trouble if we paraphrase. So I think you're.
Excuse me.
Let me finish, please.
No, we do paraphrase all the time. The minutes are full of paraphrasing. Whenever we make a comment, and she says, "Someone commented such and such," and it's not verbatim, that is the definition of a paraphrase, and we do it every, every day.
So let me finish. So what I'm going to suggest is that I think that your, your written comments, Bruce commented, "She wondered if we constrain ourselves more by establishing a policy," I think that's accurate. And I think for the Ag Preserve, we should just simply state that the city council discussed Ag Preserve and its eligibility requirements, period.
And that's fine.
Because I think that would be better than trying to add in, so that's, that's what I would suggest. Is there any other discussion or comments? Are you in agreement with those, with that?
Yes.
Okay, so then, if we could, I could have a motion to change those two paragraphs as, as I stated.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. And second has been made, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we move on to number E, and that's approve the reimbursement resolution for budgeted 2019 equipment certificates. Mr. Molitor?
Yes, I want to bring this up for council. My concern here is that for most large items that we, I have most large expenditure items, we vote on those expenditures as they come up, whether they're budgeted or not.
Right.
And even if they're, you know, budgeted, we still vote on them. On the CIP items, we seem to take a different approach in that we don't always vote on the items that are budgeted. And I'm a little bit concerned about approving this resolution without taking that same approach of making sure that we vote on the items that are within the CIP. Because it seems to me like by approving this, we're giving a blanket approval to go ahead and purchase items in here, and I don't think that's our intention.
No, it's not. Mr. Grimm, maybe you could explain what this item actually is, it's just, I'll let you have.
Yeah, I'm on the phone, you know, briefly today, as far as that, and this is more to be able to, to finance these items that are eligible, that are, were in the 2019 capital improvement plan, so we need to adopt the reimbursement resolution to be able to basically say, "Hey, we reserve the right to go out for an equipment certificate later in the year," whatever, so.
So in other words, if we purchase some of the equipment now, then we have the right then to reimburse ourselves. So we need this resolution in order to be reimbursed, so to speak.
Correct, yeah, I think this is usually what bond council recommends and stuff.
But I think, yeah, and I think your point is well made, that we, I think Gary, oh, he's not here. Generally, we go out for bids, and we get two, three, four bids, and then they bring it back, yeah. So we would, we would be doing that.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure that that's still a process for these items as well.
Yeah.
So are there some things that we did not purchase in 18 that we're rolling into 19?
Right.
And I wanna make sure that we have a full discussion on those before making those purchases.
Okay.
Yeah, the squad car is one of the items we talked about, that was.
Right, and there's some other larger ticket items in there too.
Right. Okay. So, do you have a motion then to approve that resolution?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and approved to approve the reimbursement resolution for budgeted 2019 equipment certificates with the caveat that we're gonna look at each item individually. So, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is in regards to our 2019 street improvement project. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask Mr. Adam to come forward, and, to come forward and do a brief presentation. Most of you that were here for the open house saw this, we're doing a little bit of a synopsis so we don't bore you too long. And then after that, I'll open the public hearing, and all those that are here this evening that wish to speak in regards to this, you will have an opportunity to do that, so please.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As Mayor Whelan said, my, my name is Adam Gabois, I'm with WSB.
Okay, I didn't say that, but you're right.
That's what you meant.
That's what I meant.
Members of the council, city staff, and I'm sure some of the community members in the audience have seen this presentation at the neighborhood meeting, which was held on February 4th. And in an effort to not waste anyone's time, we'll go through it relatively quick, and then afterwards, we'll have the public hearing. So this is in regards to the 2019 street improvement project, City Project 01-19. The project area here is shown up on the screen, and it's in the northern quadrant, kinda the northwestern quadrant of the city. The streets that we'll be discussing tonight, that are part of the project that are proposed to be assessed, are Kristen Lane, Oxy Oak Circle, and DeShane Lane and DeShane Circle. So as far as the project background, the city of Minatrista has a capital improvement plan, as brought up in a number of other discussions tonight. And among many other things, it focuses on improving the street conditions throughout the city. Streets are evaluated based on their pavement condition index. Staff and consultants will evaluate the streets and determine what kinda shape they're in. And then we'll group these streets based on geographic location, try and obtain better costs when we go and propose reconstruction. Back on November 13th, the Minatrista City Council authorized the preparation of a feasibility report. That report was created and necessary because a portion of the costs are proposed to be assessed. We were following the state statute, Chapter 429, which we'll talk about a little bit later, and we did hold the neighborhood meeting on February 4th. So in terms of the streets themselves, the existing conditions, they're deteriorating, the bituminous is in poor shape overall, they have been evaluated via field inspection, and a portion of the streets have been cored as well. We're witnessing alligator, block, transverse cracking, overall, they're just structurally deficient. The range of the PCI is 39 to 48 for these streets, which basically means they're too far gone to do any sort of maintenance efforts such as patching or milling overlay. There are some areas with poor drainage at driveways that have settled over the years or where patches have been placed. And there's some minor public utilities in the area, and those need a little bit of work as well. So what's, what's proposed to improve the pavement condition is a process called full depth reclamation. This is a process by which the existing pavement surface is pulverized, blended with the underlying gravel, and that produces the new gravel that's used to put brand-new pavement down. Over on the right, you'll see a picture of kinda what a new street would look like, that's Kings Point Road, which was reconstructed in 2014. As far as the streets on this project, the street widths will remain the same, where there is bituminous curb that will get replaced where it currently exists. And street grades, the slope of the, and the profile of the roadway will match closely to what it exists today, but we will be looking at those areas of poor drainage and adjust the profiles accordingly. We won't be doing too much, we do have driveways to match into. So no drastic changes to the dimensions of the roadway here. In terms of restoration, for the turfed areas, they'll be receiving sod, so up next to a driveway or wherever your turf is disturbed, it will get sod for restoration. Some additional improvements, as I discussed, very minor utility work on the storm sewer mainly, since there, there really isn't any water sanitary for these proposed streets. In terms of the projected costs and financing, for the streets discussed for, and available for special assessments, the estimated cost is $426,245. Half of that will be covered, or is proposed to be covered by city CIP funds, and half covered by special assessments to the benefiting property owners. So, the city has an assessment policy that follows the state statute, Chapter 429, and that policy basically gives guidelines to the council and the city staff on how they can assess for capital improvements. And their policy states that surface and stormwater improvements only are assessed at 50%. Costs associated with any water or sewer, which there aren't very, very much if at all on this project, would not be assessed. And each property within the project area is assigned one, one unit, and that's how they'll be assessed. So there's a total of 31 parcels within the four streets proposed for construction, which amounts to an estimated unit assessment rate of 6,875 per unit at this time. We'll be discussing more, if the, if the project goes forward, about assessments on, at the assessment hearing on June 3rd. And you can always reach out to city staff, but there are deferments available in very special cases, and the payment period is typically 15 to 20 years. In terms of the project schedule, tonight, February 19th, we're having the public hearing, and then the council will be considering authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications. Once those are created, at, kinda in the middle of the march there, we'd authorize ad for bids and put the project out for bid. In April, we would open bids. The council would order assessment hearing on May 6th. That assessment hearing would be held on June 3rd, and the council would accept bids and award contract. Construction would begin in June of 2019, and substantial completion would be by 2019, and then the final paving, any punch list items, will be completed by September 2019. And that's all I have for the presentation, we can roll into the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much. So, we, this is a public hearing. Now, just to, for clarification, this is not the assessment hearing, so we are not determining the assessments tonight. This, what was presented here this evening is simply an estimate. It is not the final or even the amount that we would be assessing, it's just an estimate. But this evening, what, what the public hearing is for, is for the public to be able to come forward and tell us what you think and give us your opinion, very respectfully, I might add. And, and you'll have a few minutes, and when you come forward, you'll have to state your name and address for the record. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I know people are here, so do we wanna start on this side? Anybody in the back row wanna say anything? Okay, we'll go here, to this, second row here, on this side.
Hello, my name is Glenn Whiteley, I live at 155 Ingerson Road in Minatrista. Basically, that's, I read in the
And, and you'll have a few minutes and when you come forward, you'll have to state your name and address for the record. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And I know people are here, so do we want to start on this side? Anybody? Anybody in the back row want to say anything? Okay, we'll go here to this, second row here on this side.
Hello, my name is Glenn Whiteley, I live at one fifty-five Ingerson Road in Minatrista. Basically, that's, I read in the public announcement here that Ingerson Road, Hill on Ingerson Road is going to be paved and I also see that we're not going to be assessed for that. However, there is a point that I'd like to bring up to the council, and that is that there are approximately two hundred horses that use Ingerson Road over the course of, when our short summer occurs. And I'm requesting that when Ingerson Road Hill is paved and in the future when the rest of Ingerson Road is paved, that a bridle path be installed along one side or both sides of the road. Reason for that is, as I, as I stated, there are about two hundred horses, you ever take a few. Ingerson Road is a major pathway to the loose line. A number of our horse riding neighbors, including us, use a loop that takes us down the loose line, Game Farm Road, County Road twenty-six. So it's a fairly well-used horse bridle path area. There's a lot of potential for damage with the pavement. If you've ever been to Harmony, you'll see that the Amish horses really do a job on the pavement down there. In the early eighties, we lived in Medina and when Medina started paving the, the city streets, they did put a bridle path or a path along the side of the road that horse owners could use in that area. So my reason for this comment is just to bring that to your attention, that the northern, northwestern corner of Minatrista is a very horsey area. There are a number of new facilities that are being built in Independence, so I'm assuming that it will stay, remain a horsey area for, you know, some time.
Yeah, thank you. And you're aware, yeah, you're aware that we're just paving a short distance and it has to do with the plowing, yeah. And we're not thinking of doing Ingerson anytime in the near future.
And I've talked to public work.
Okay, okay, good.
They did a lot of work along Ingerson Road lining it this, this summer. But the reason I bring it up is because on that hill, it'd really be nice to have a space to horse to use.
Sure, yeah, okay.
And I think in the long run, as far as the city is concerned, will probably be a, a good investment for the longevity of the pavement.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else?
So I'm Brian Derso, I live at five thirty-five Kristen Lane. Can we pull the picture back up there?
Sure.
It happened to be Kristen Lane. I don't know who has control of that. So Kristen Lane has five homes on it, you can see, and is a cul-de-sac, no outlet. Off to the right here, you see the, the first home. And then just to the left is a second home, right on the end of Kristen. And then there are three homes further back. And so being an outlet and a cul-de-sac, Kristen Lane has about two cars a day, one of them being the postman that comes onto Kristen Lane. The rest of it is just the three of us that live back there. Of the five homes, this one that's in the picture is the only one that's, has a concrete driveway. Our home in the back on the left-hand side also has, is partially concrete. And so the other homes are all gravel, right? So. Very little traffic, gravel around it, virtually no visibility to the street. And then you received, I think during the week or last week from the rest of the residents, a petition kind of opposing doing Kristen Road for those reasons. They're happy with the road condition it is and are not happy with the proposed assessment, if you will. And so my, my comments are basically just in general summarizing for the others and for myself that we would prefer not to have the work done and to just continue to maintain it as possible.
So I just have a quick question, Mr. Derso. How many homes are built there? There's five lots, right?
There's five homes.
Okay, there's five homes, five lots, okay.
Two are right here.
Yeah.
Originally, we never, and, and none of the neighbors see each other. And really, so the only traffic on the entire road, of course, this is ninety-two.
Yeah.
The only traffic that goes past those rocks right there are the three of us that live back there. And, you know, the garbage man once a week.
Right.
The mailman once a day, most days. So very low traffic, very low visibility to the city. So it's not like it's, when you talk about it doing it for improvement, for, it's not really an eyesore doing it when there's no traffic there, as long as the road can be maintained and the drainage and so forth.
So just, I'm, I'm pretty sure that you saw this in your packet. The residents, and they were unanimous, they're, all five residents signed a petition requesting the city not to improve their road, not to make it better. So.
Not to assess the.
Well, we can't.
I'd rather pay for assessment for fiber optic cable or for natural gas coming to our neighborhood than for the road, yes.
Okay, all right, okay. So. Any other, okay, thank you very much, yeah. Any, just a quick question, maybe our engineer could ask this. I'm not, again, not all the people are here on Kristen tonight, but if we, so this is a reclamation project versus a reconstruct. And I know when we were talking about doing the reclamation project on Enchanted, we said if we do the reclamation project now, it could forestall, if you will, a complete reconstruct for maybe twenty years. What, can you give us kind of a background on that? If we do reclamation now or if we don't do reclamation now, what is, what's the other option then?
So looking at a reclamation option is, is basically the, the last type of project that could be done except for a reconstruction project. So that's, that was the, the reason before the reclamation project is based on the pavement corians, as we discussed previously, that the condition of the road is, is not conducive to a milling overlay. So the reclamation project is proposed. As far as the lifetime, lifespan of a reclamation road, you know, water really does affect how long that could last. I think twenty years is, is a solid estimate of time for how long a, a reclamation project could last. But that's, you know, short of a reconstruction project, the, the reclamation would be the, the other, the only other option that I would recommend for this road.
And is there a cost difference between a total reconstruct?
Absolutely. So a, a street reconstruction cost, looking at the city's standard section, could go, you know, three times to four times the cost of a reclamation project. That's a, and I give you the range because it depends on, are you doing the sand section? Are there utilities that need to go in there? So that's why there's, you can see the variability, but it is a more expensive project.
Well, in this case, there's no utilities going in, but.
Correct.
Yeah.
With, with a reconstruction project, you do have some more opportunity to put in a storm sewer because you're able to go and force low points in, in the road and so on. Because you are, you are digging up the street. You know, is there enough gravel underneath the road? You'll have to go in and, and dig in so that you can get more gravel down there. So there is some opportunity to do some utility improvement.
Okay. Okay. So. Anybody else wishing to speak for, against, comments? Otherwise, okay?
My name is John Anderson, I'm at sixty-eight forty-five DeShane Lane. I think this. Reclamation.
Reclamation, right.
Reclamation project is much needed. It makes our neighborhood, it adds value. I can see the reason for it. My petition or my request to the council is to reconsider asking the neighborhood to pay a total of fifty percent of the cost of the project. You have gone to lower percentages for, for example, Game Farm. And I know their, their land is bigger and their, their cost was divided among fewer people. But. They seem like they can afford it with all of the horse barns and everything else out there. So I would suggest, and I know, I think they paid maybe twenty-five percent. I think a reasonable request would be for us to pay thirty-five percent of that project just to ease the burden on people that maybe aren't so fortunate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Again, good comments to hear. We won't be making a decision on the assessments tonight, but we will be making a decision on whether we move forward with the project. So whether we authorize the plans and specifications. So. Any other comments? Hearing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and take it back to council.
Mayor, before, before I let you dive in with comments from our city council, I would like to just take a minute or two to discuss a little bit what I did with council calls this morning. I had a number of options that I gave to council members as we discussed this item for tonight's. And I just wanted to kind of lay those out for them and then you guys can have your discussion on it. So there's actually, I said three this morning, there's actually four choices that this council has on how they want to approach this tonight. One would be to remove the Kristen Lane residents from this project altogether. And then because of that, potentially raise the dollar amount that would be assessed to the other remaining properties in the, the project overall. Yep, that's if you keep maintaining the fifty-fifty. As Mr. Anderson just mentioned, there have been other roads in the city over the years where we've assessed less than fifty percent, so you could remove. Second option would be to remove Kristen Lane and keep the assessed amount as that they have or lower, higher, however you want to do it, but that would be a deviation from our fifty-fifty. Like I said, that has been done before, he mentioned that. Third item would be to stop now and try to find, if Kristen is removed from the project, to try to find another street or streets that kind of line up with the amount of money available, I guess, for the, lack of a better phrase, to substitute that, but that, the outcome of that would be to delay our overall project. And one of the reasons we're here in February talking about this is that we wanted to try to get a better jump on the bidding that would take place and have that be more to our advantage by doing that in the winter hours versus middle of the summer. And then the fourth item, which is probably a pretty unpopular one, but it is a, a choice, whether it's politically for council members or for residents on Kristen Lane, is just ignore the Kristen Lane residents and go ahead and do the project with their street included. Now, the only reason I'm saying that, because even though they have appropriate interest in having this removed, they don't want to pay the assessment or they don't want their street improved or both, whatever the combination of factors will be for those homeowners. One of the things that city council members get charged to do is to look overall, citywide, at what kind of street projects you need to do to maintain our city streets and what kind of schedule you need to maintain. And so if every time we do a road construction project, a couple of, one street or two streets hop off, we're not making the progress we need to make overall as a city in order to improve all our roadways. I understand their complaint, they don't, either A, don't think it needs it, or B, don't want to pay for it or both. But this council and other councils in the future are going to have to deal with all these roads. And as Ms. Fowski pointed out, you're looking at a, a, a potential cost of three and four times this amount if it goes to a total reconstruction. And they may not be for the Kristen Lane folks now, but it will be in their future. And that's an immensely larger amount of money that the city will have to spend on streets. And when you start spending on reconstruction versus reclaims, we're wasting our time and money waiting for reconstructions to happen because they're much more costly to do. We can do a lot more streets doing reclaims than we can one reconstruction. So I just wanted to make sure that the council members understood that there's more than one option than just taking Kristen Lane out and the variations thereof, so I'll let you have your discussion on those items.
Thank you, Mr. Broney. Okay, so options galore here.
I have a question for our city engineer. In your estimation, how long could Kristen Lane last without a reclamation project and without significant maintenance being done? I mean, in your estimation?
I think there's a subjective answer to that because as a road deteriorates, it, it becomes, the ride becomes very poor, becomes similar to the ride of a gravel surface where you're not even able to go and, and reestablish it. I, I, I don't have a good number as far as, you know, number of years that it would last until it's a reconstruction project. I'm not trying to dodge the question, but I, I think that there's, you know, it'll, it'll continue to deteriorate. It was built in, I believe, the seventies. So it's certainly nearing the end of the pavement life that we're, you know, we're probably very close to the cusp between a reclamation project and a reconstruction project. But I can't tell you as far as number of years until we reach that reconstruction.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fowski, but I believe this initially was supposed to be a milling overlay, correct? And then the coring was done and it was determined that it's too far gone to do just a milling overlay?
That was in a different street.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's why I asked.
That there are, you know, that we do look at the surface condition of the roads to make a recommendation and then once those corians come in is when we make the.
Yeah, because when you patch and patch and patch, it's hard to tell what's really there, so.
Ultimately, when we, I mean, and we don't have to do this, but I know when the people begged out of the, the pave portion on the hall step project, I think they sort of, I mean, whether it's five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, they sort of go to the end of the line and whether the reconstruct happens fifteen, twenty years from now, I don't think it would be anytime in the near future, I think would be a fair statement to make, correct?
I think that would be a fair statement.
Okay.
Of course, you know, dependent on the council's direction, this current council or any future council, if this street wasn't included in this year's project, that would certainly be their purview. But typically, you, you try to look forecast three years or more in advance. And if, if a road falls off this current proposed project, we would have to find another place for it in a future date.
Well, I was just going to talk about one of the options that Mr. Broney said, but I don't really think that's an option. If, if Kristen Lane is not in the mix, I don't think that we have time to go out now to do another road because that would delay everything months on end. So if that's the direction that the council would like to take, not doing Kristen Lane, then I would suggest that we simply take those dollars and roll them into next year's projects and then just set those aside for next year versus delaying everything this year. Because we're already down the road here and, and I think it would be a disservice to the residents.
I, I agree with that, I think. Just removing Kristen Lane off of our list and, and moving the money into next year would be a solution. I think it's a, it's a, it's a win-win for them. They, they don't want the road project and if we still can find another road project down the line.
The only thing I would, my, my comment, and I don't disagree, my comment is I think there needs to be a clear understanding for the five residents on Kristen Lane that two or three or four years from now or five years from now, when that road is so bad that they want it reconstructed, it may not happen and it may happen at a much higher cost. So having said that, the other thing I want to make clear too, I'm not prepared to increase the assessments to the remaining twenty-six, twenty-six properties. So that has to be part of the discussion and maybe not tonight, but that needs to be part of the discussion. I don't think it's, and I don't know how much money is going to be coming off the project. I don't know if, you know, maybe, maybe not doing it will actually lower the assessment costs. I don't know, but I'm not interested in increasing the assessment cost just because Kristen Lane is no longer in it.
I'd like to add to that. I think your point's well taken that I don't think there's going to be any extra money to roll in the next year because of this. I think what's going to happen is we're going to end up taking that money and using it for the other road, rather part of this road project to keep the assessment amount at where it's at right now. So I, I, I just don't want us to kid ourselves and say, oh, we're going to roll a bunch of money next year because of this year. That's not going to happen.
It may not, but we can think positive.
Well, no, but let's be realistic, I mean, when it doesn't grow on trees, that's just, that's the way it's going to be. So.
I'd agree with that economics being what it is. Nothing tomorrow is going to cost what it did today and the odds are it's not going down, it's going up. I have a question, Mr. Peters is not here, but if nothing is done to Kristen Lane, what type of ongoing maintenance would the city do? Is there a limit to what can be done when a road reaches this? And I've been on all of these just to look at them and while I'm just a layman and was never an engineer, just the look of Kristen in regards to others, it looks a lot rougher to me and admittedly, only five residents out there and maybe there's not a lot of heavy traffic going in and out, but it, it looks rough. And I, I would agree with the assessment. It looks like if we don't do it now and you wait, it's going to be much more expensive to do it later and it'll still be an assessable situation. And so it's a pay me now or a pay me later. So again, I guess I'm back to, would we, are we still doing patching and those types of things? Because it's starting to crack up. I can see a snowplow eventually hooking the blacktop and pulling pieces out because it's starting to break up in places. And now, now you've got cost to the city to try to keep the road in a good condition for the residents.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just based on conversations with Gary and other roads and what he's done historically and to your point, what you said about the. And to your point, what you said about the snowplow, that's to, at a minimum, what, what they're going to do. Obviously, the, the safety of their trucks and what they do from a maintenance standpoint is what's most important. And it gets to a point where there's only so much they can do. There's only so much they can patch. So it's, you almost have to give up. So, um, constant regular patching with, like they would do with other roads would not occur, I can almost assure you. But, um, he's going to have to do what he can do to make sure he can plow it.
Sure, okay. It's a complete Band-Aid approach probably going forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I am a little concerned too about the comment of, and maybe you can explain this a little, little bit better. If we pull off Kristen Lane, the cost to the other residents could possibly go up.
Well, that would be if, uh, mayor and council, that would be if you decide to stick with the fifty fifty. Right now, we have thirty-one parcels. If you diminish that to twenty-six parcels, they're paying in a percentage more, you know.
But there's also lesser costs because you're not doing Deshane Lane.
True, but you know, that, that would be to be determined, but just a quick guess, it's probably going to go up. Maybe not a lot, but yeah, so. And I've already heard a council, a few council members say they're not really interested in, in increasing the cost to the other ones that are kind of sticking to this project. So that, that's certainly up to this council to decide if they want to, and as the mayor pointed out, that comes with the assessment here and you can figure it out then.
We're not bound to the fifty percent. It's a policy. It's not an ordinance. And so we can def, we can, as, as Mr. Anderson pointed out, we have in the past, um, sidestepped the policy because of the costs involved. And so when we look at assessments, we're going to want to look at what's fair.
Right.
And, and we need to make sure that they're not too high.
That can get to be subjective as well.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Of course it's subjective. I mean, we'll have to cross that at that point.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have, to your point about what's fair, well, history is usually a pretty good guide. We have a lot of history on that, on assessments. So I think we can get that figured out. But the point does remain that we're taking probably a small reduction in cost because we're not doing the road and spreading it over a, a smaller base of people. So that will likely increase the per person cost, the per parcel cost.
If, if we raise it, but we don't have to.
If you stuck to the fifty.
If you stuck to fifty fifty, it would go, but you have.
Right, but my point being is if we don't and we decide to, because we're spreading the cost amongst fewer properties, if we don't, that just eats up all the savings that I just talked about.
That's what you had mentioned before. Right, right.
Um, the other concern, if we do not do Kristen Lane now and ever according to the residents, um, the cost to the city for our staff to be out there to maintain this, I mean, how much, how much time and energy do they spend to maintain this?
Well, the, you know, I, I can't quantify that today, what they're going to do in the future. But in general, what I mentioned at the open house was there's two things that are going to have to happen. Um, if you don't do this, you're going to do the total reconstruct. And I just mentioned Gary has and his crew got limited time and resources. And so, um, as, as we said, you know, they're probably not going to be at the top of the list for all the patching because it's in such disrepair and, and we've got other places to patch. And we've got lots of things to patch unfortunately, so. It's not going to be at the top of the list. I mean, it's, like I said, it's a complete Band-Aid. I mean, you put it down, it's not going to stay very long.
Uh, you know, it's fine that, you know, the residents say, you know, that's what they want. Until, you know, it gets so bad and then we start hearing the complaints.
No, and that's.
So the end, because now they've elected it not to be a priority, um, you know, it's still going to, we're going to be getting calls.
And I think to add on to that, um, if someone sells and a new person comes in, because I've, I've had this happen with previous races. Someone moves in and goes, what are you going to do with these streets? They look awful. Uh, you know, well, we had that discussion in two thousand nineteen and we opted to do nothing and now your street's at the bottom of the list. Sorry you weren't here when we made that decision. So sad. So just keep in mind, I, you know, I, I want to respect the wishes of the people who live there now. But, uh, you know, there's going to be people that live there in the future that are going to get stuck with that decision.
And maybe they have to work something else, their closing costs, that their closing, at the time, you know, basically to escrow some street value.
It, it, they can do that, sure, uh, but that still doesn't fix their street. You know, they, they still don't fix the street. So I, you know, I, I have to think about future residents too. I'm guessing, you know, it's a nice area, probably doesn't turn over that much, and that's great.
I guess what I would, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Malater. That's not, that's, that's true. Um, I would say this, I mean, again, this probably would rarely happen because most of our streets have more than five residents on them. But it was a unanimous decision by the residents. If there, if it wasn't unanimous, even if there was one person or whatever, or two people that wanted it done, I think I'd view it somewhat different, but because it's unanimous by all five, that, I think there, that puts a lot more weight behind the request. So, but you're right, um, what will happen in the future, but I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball.
I, I think it's a matter of managing expectations and just making sure that the residents on Kristen Lane understand that we have limited resources to patch a road that, that needs reconstruction or, or reclamation. And if, if they're happy living on the street the way it is and you're happy with it deteriorating, like you should expect it's going to deteriorate. That's just an expectation that, that has to be there. And it, it is unanimous and I, I think that does carry a lot of weight. And, um, I think as long as everybody understands what the expectations are, I think it'll be fine. As long as they understand that we have limited resources and we can't be taking phone calls to come out every, a lot to, to patch things. So I, they, I think they understand.
Okay.
The decision.
All right. So is it your wish then to remove Kristen Lane? I know it's a hard decision and there's pros and cons both ways, but we do need to make a decision this evening, so.
Did you want to say something else?
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We are looking at item, uh, item six B.
Yep.
Is to approve the project that perhaps might be.
We'll do it under there. I'm sorry, yes. Yep, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, all right. So, um, well, we had concluded our, um, our public hearing, so, for that. So we'll come, bring this back under item B, um, six B. Next, we have a second public hearing and that is for a vacation of a certain portion of drainage and utility easements at Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition. This should go fairly fast. Mr. Abel?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I was going to say you'll beat item six B very quickly here, I should anticipate. Um, as mayor stated, this is a public hearing to vacate drainage and utility easements in between lots four and five in block four, Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition. The two lots are on your screen.
It's a safe.
Um, before you, and the utility easement that we're vacating is along this common lot line. As pointed out in your staff report, um, a client bought lot four with the intentions of building a house and upon going to design that house, desired to buy lot five and wanted to, uh, combine the two lots so that they could position their house on, on the two lots there at their desired location. So in order to allow them to go ahead and combine those two lots, what we need to do per state statute is vacate that drainage and utility easement so they could then construct the house over that, that common lot line that will now go away. So.
Will it become one lot?
It will become one lot, yes, Madam Mayor. Um, as pointed out in the staff, uh, report too, as you'll recall, there is a minimum unit number that Woodland Cove needs to hit at, at the end of the day. And as pointed out, we still do have units in the bank, if you will. Um, we're exceeding the, the density requirement as we go through the phases. So this does not do anything, uh, of, of a negative impact on the total unit number for, for the whole Woodland Cove site and, and the development. So with that, we'll ask you to go ahead and open the, the public hearing. The first business item is a resolution that would go ahead and vacate the drainage and utilities and then authorize that lot combination.
Okay. So with that, um, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that we should speak for or against? Mr. Newman?
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to note, I'm with Woodland Cove. We support the staff report. I'm here if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, nobody else is here to speak on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And so we'll take it to our business items right away and we're going to go business A, um, six A. And that's approve or the vacation of a certain portion of drainage easement as Mr. Abel just pointed out. Are there any questions of staff? Any concerns? I think I, I like, I like the fact that there's larger lots out on this peninsula. I always didn't want that many lots out there to begin with, so this is a good thing, I think. Hey, otherwise, is there a motion to approve the vacation of a certain portion of drainage and utility easements over the common lot line between lots four and five, block four, Woodland Cove Lake Second Edition, creating one lot?
So moved.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. So next we move on to the, uh, business item to approve the project and authorize the preparation of plans and specifications for the twenty nineteen street improvement projects. And we've already discussed it, so any further discussion? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the project, um, excluding, I think there was some consensus, if I'm not mistaken, excluding Kristen Lane? More and more discussion?
I personally feel that it needs to be left the way it is. I, I, I understand the unanimous opinion there, but I think for the betterment of the city in total, um, that it should be included in the improvement plan. To take it out, it, it just causes a ripple effect through the others. And not that that's an overriding thing, but the cost is going to go up there. The roads are not going to get better. Uh, and eventually it's going to cost somebody there a lot more money in my opinion at this stage, from my knowledge. So I think it needs to be left in. Now, on a side point, I've, we haven't, I've been on the, haven't been here long enough to know, we haven't dealt with appraisals, but maybe when we get to the appraisal, or not appraisals, I'm sorry, assessments. When they get to the assessments, there's discussion on that fifty percent. And being I'm green at this and novice at that, that's just my opinion. But I think Kristen Lane needs to be left in the way we originally projected.
Okay, all right.
I'll be voting no on the, on the plans and specifications, not because of the Kristen Lane taking that out, but because of the, the, the increase in the road budget for the year. I voted against that and suspending that money and that's why I'm voting against this.
Okay. And Mr. Malater, any comments or?
Um, okay, I'm, one comment I want to make, and I, I realize it doesn't directly apply to this, but if I may have just a minute to discuss this.
Sure, absolutely.
This is a prime example of why within the neck, it's now February nineteenth, I would like to see within the next two months, a open house to the public on our twenty twenty road projects. We've already got them identified in the, in what we want to do. And I would like to have that discussion for twenty twenty in the next two months so that if we run into a situation like this, we have other options and we have time to respond. And I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. I think we're, we've made progress in, in looking ahead. And I think that would be the next step in doing that. I just wanted to make that note here. I realize it's not directly to this, but I, I would really like to move forward on that.
Can we give it a little more wiggle room, maybe three months or something because?
No more than three. No, I'm serious.
I'm just trying to figure out everything else that we have coming up, so.
But we really do need to address this in a much more timely fashion so that we can respond in a better manner. Because I don't think any of us are happy about the situation right now. And we can get around this if we get ahead of this.
Um, but the only reason I'm saying we need more time and Ms. Fowski, maybe you can weigh in. In order to have an open house, similar to what we just did and have some numbers or estimates, you'd have to do a feasibility report and come up with those estimates. Am I wrong?
That's correct. So in order to present, um, an estimated assessment, we would have to have some more in, information available. Um, we could certainly look at holding an open house, knowing, um, the proposed improvements based on our recommendation, based on the information we have available and take in the comment from the neighborhood based on what we know at that time. And, um, and, and bring that back to the, you know, for the, to the council for discussion as far as whether or not council would like to proceed with those improvements.
Okay. And, and I don't disagree. I think it's always good to give more of a heads up. I, I think that's always a good idea. The more heads up we can give, the better, but, um, I'm just a little concerned about the two-month frame. Um, in, in the near future is what I would like to say.
Depending on where we go to. I mean, I think one of the projects we've talked about is maybe one of our local stakeholders on Sunnyfield, the, you know, whether it's the, you know what I mean?
Well, that was, yeah.
We have, that's been sitting on the table for six months and nothing's happened. So.
Well, we've already spoken with the school district regarding that though too. And we, we will be meeting with them within the next couple of months.
Okay, I didn't know we spoke to them.
Unofficially, yeah.
Okay, I haven't heard the results of that, so, um, I, it just, I don't think that's a good excuse. We need to get this done.
Okay.
So I do agree with Mike on the point that I would like to get an earlier jump, um, for t, uh, twenty twenty. So going back to Kristen Lane. All right, these are one of those hard decisions. Um, I tend to sway with leaving Kristen Lane in. Um, and one of my biggest reasons is because I don't want the other residents to have to pay anything more at this point than what is laid out right here. And I don't want the city residents that are already picking up fifty percent or whatever. I don't think those residents should have to pay anymore either. So I'm saying keep Kristen Lane in and just go with the project as listed.
Okay. I, I think when you have a hundred percent of the residents that live on a road that are going to be assessed personally for a project, it's different than a general fund expenditure that you can just decide to ignore. This is six thousand dollars that is coming out of their personal pockets. This isn't general fund revenue that we're spending on this road. This is a special assessment that they're paying personally. And a hundred percent of those people on that road don't want the project. I can't ignore that and I don't think any of us should if we indeed represent these people in Minatrista.
Well, hold on, hold on.
We essentially would be ignoring it.
Well, just a minute. Hold on, I'm going to just say a couple of things. We're just, we've already stated, um, I don't think anybody's ignoring it. I think we all stated our opinions and our, our stance. And I think, you know, there's, I, I agree. I mean, you know, John made a statement, you've made statements, you've made statements. You can look at it from both sides and I, there's validity to both sides. There's validity to both sides and it is a tough decision. I'm going to be voting no if Kristen Lane is in it. I do think that if they want to be out and they know the consequences, so be it. Um, but if the majority of the council wishes to move forward with Kristen Lane in it, so be it. I can see both sides. So, um, with that said?
Madam Mayor, if I may just jump in on that note, um, because I believe there wasn't a petition to start this process, to initiate this process, adopting the resolution ordering the improvement actually requires a four-fifths vote of the council. Uh, so that's just something I ask you to keep in mind as you discuss where, where your heads are at.
Okay, you're saying.
It means more than a simple majority. It needs four votes.
It needs four votes to, okay, to do the project, to order any project. Okay.
So to adopt the resolution that's been prepared.
Can we break it out then? Can we order the, can we, uh, make a motion to approve the project and authorize preparation and plans and specifications for Deshane Lane, Deshane Circle and Oxy Oak Circle?
Yeah, and I believe that's one of the options that we've been discussing. So I think the fundamental question is leave Kristen Lane in or take it out. Either one of those votes would require a four-fifths majority.
Right. But I'm saying if the motion is for Deshane Lane, Deshane Circle and Oxy Oak, um, and there's four people that vote for that, then, um, the Kristen Lane is automatically out, so we're not voting. Now, if other people want it, so what I'm, what I'm going to propose is that we have two motions. One motion for Deshane Lane, Deshane Circle and Oxy Oak. If that passes with four, which I think it will, then, um, the next motion would have to be for Kristen Lane. In or out?
Yes, oh, I see what you're saying. I think you could do it that way. Yes, oh, I see what you're saying. I think you could do it that way. What I might recommend is holding sort of those as procedural votes and then adopting the resolution with a clear record of what's in and what's out. The resolution that's been prepared and that's in your packet includes all of the streets.
Okay.
If the will of the council or four of the five of you is to do the project without the Kristen Lane folks in, then I think the clearest way to do that would be to reach that conclusion, but then adopt the resolution and clearly state whether that's in or out. Not to hold two votes that may, could be interpreted as in conflict. So, I think it's fine to make a motion to do the three streets.
The reason I'm saying that is what I'm hearing right now is that there's three vote, potentially three votes for keeping Kristen in, okay? So if that's the motion, then what will happen is the whole, all three projects fail. And I don't think that's what the council wants. I think the council, the majority of the council wants at least DuShane Lane, DuShane Circle, and Oxyoke.
And so my suggestion would be to hold sort of a procedural vote, a motion to accept those three streets into the project. And if there's four votes for that, great.
Okay.
The next procedural vote would be to include Kristen Lane in the project. If there's four votes for that, great. If not, then we'll know where the will of the council is. And then the next motion would be to adopt the resolution either with that, with the street in or without the street in.
Okay, so three.
So it's sort of a three-part method of getting there just to make sure that we comply with the requirement.
All right. So, first part, is there a motion?
Let me finish discussion.
Sure.
Like I mentioned, I do want to clarify, just to your comments, Mr. First. This, you're saying this is all direct assessment money and it's not general fund. That's 50% true. It's not 100% true. There is 50% of this is general fund. I just want to be clear about that. The 7,000 is not the whole cost of the project. That's still general fund money.
That's understood.
Yeah.
That wasn't how it was worded.
Okay, all right.
So let me, let me clarify what you just said. So if the first statement we're going to vote on is Oxyoke and DuShane Lane and Circle, but I would like to see Kristen involved, do I vote no on that? Or yes, because I know they need to be done as well?
I think to the mayor's point, if you wanted those streets to be included in the project, I think you would want to vote yes, and that would indicate that you want those streets in the project. The next question will be whether to include the fourth street in.
Okay.
So one question at a time. Hold on, Mr. Biggerstaff. One question at a time. So, Mr. Trumperland, I think you want to make a motion, right? And I think your motion wants to be to authorize plans and specifications for DuShane Lane, DuShane Circle, and Oxyoke. Is that correct? Because we, I think we agree we want to do those.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Is there also direction as far as the other?
We're going to get to that second motion and the third motion. What I'm hearing our attorney say is, three motions are probably needed. So this is the first motion, okay? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes, 4-0. Bruce dissenting. So now, Mr., I'm sorry, 4-1, I'm sorry. Mr. Biggerstaff, now a motion should be made to include Kristen Lane in the project. So, that's where, Ms. Mortensen, Mr. Trumperland, now you can make a motion to include Kristen Lane in the project.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, Bruce?
Would be a nay.
Nay, okay. Malater and Whalen, so the motion fails? Do you need a three, third one now?
So now, I would recommend that we actually adopt the resolution without Kristen Lane as part of the project.
All right.
Because the resolution is what actually orders the improvement. What we've done is sort of identify what the scope of the project will be now.
Okay.
So, the motion would be to adopt the resolution that's in your packet with.
Without Kristen Lane, okay. So the majority are the, yeah. So is there a motion to that effect? I know it's confusing, but, Mr. Malater?
Yes, so moved.
So moved. Is there a second? I'll make the second, okay? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So, but then there's no project, period. See, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Is if you want to have a project, it looks like that DuShane Lane and Oxyoke, that there's four people that want that. But, three people want to exclude Kristen. So how can we get there?
So, four people need to approve a resolution ordering the improvement for the three streets that you've identified, that four of you have identified wanting in a project. That would be the resolution that's in your packet minus Kristen Lane.
Okay.
So, the vote on the motion that you just took, if your desire individually were to see the project move forward with those three streets included, you would want to vote yes on that, on the resolution, acknowledging that it will not include Kristen Lane in the improvement this year.
Understand.
Okay, so, we're going to have to, we're going to have to take another motion and another revote. Is there some kind of?
I think he can just rescind his motion, or his vote.
But we already took the vote.
Well, I understand that, but he can just rescind it and change it to a yes vote versus his no vote, because we're still discussing the same item.
Right.
So that would then be, but Ms. Mortensen would also have to rescind her name.
So what I, no, no, she makes four.
She, she already voted yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's 3-2. That would be 4-1.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I might recommend, just to make sure that we have an incredibly clear record.
That's what I would say, too.
We want.
Is that somebody make a motion to reconsider the previous motion. That motion be seconded and voted on. If three of you agree to reconsider, then we reconsider that motion, which is for approval of the resolution for the three streets, not including Kristen Lane. So the first motion would be a motion to reconsider the previous vote, which would be seconded and voted on.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
So approved.
Okay, is there a second? To reconsider the previous motion?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to reconsider the previous motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Next, Mr. Biggerstaff, thank you.
The final motion in our journey here will be the reconsideration of the motion to approve the resolution in your packet ordering the improvement for the three streets, not including Kristen Lane. So the resolution will be edited to remove that from the project.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland seconded that, Malater made that motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So we're still, so we're still, we're still two, twos.
So I would have to do the same as what John did.
Right, yeah.
Do we have two no votes, like? We're the no votes besides Shannon.
We have, I didn't realize, I thought that was just the one that would correct.
It needs to be a super majority.
We need four fifths.
We need four, four fifths, so. I know it's confusing.
Let's not do that again. Let's not do three and four again. Let's just rescind it like you wanted to do. Want to go that route?
If, if council member who wants to rescind the motion, or vote.
Yeah, just change.
We're trying to get, basically what we're trying to do is we're trying to get DuShane Lane, DuShane Circle, and Oxyoke Lane in the project for 2019. That's what we're trying to do. Now, it's not everything that we want, so it is for some of you a compromise. I understand that, but we do want to get some of these roads done. So I'm asking for a compromise. I'm asking to approve the motion or to rescind your nay vote and make it a, or you to make it a yea vote, yes vote.
Okay, I will rescind my vote.
So, then it turns to 4-1, and you're still nay?
No.
Okay. So it's a 4-1 vote, moving forward to do DuShane Lane, DuShane Circle, and Oxyoke Circle, I think it is. And Kristen Lane is out, okay. All right, I know that was very confusing for all of you. It was very confusing for us as well. This is the first time this has happened. But again, we will be talking about the assessments as we move forward. I think it's clear we want to make sure that everybody gets a fair assessment. So, with that, thank you very much, and we will move on to our next item. That concludes, actually, our business items, so we will move now on to staff reports.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's that time of year for the city administrator performance review process to begin. And so tomorrow, or later this week, I should say, before the end of the week, you will be receiving, as will our executive staff members, some information from Ms. Tabor outlining the process for my review for last year, basically. It's actually a January to January thing, but nonetheless, it's for essentially last year. One new wrinkle that I would like to add to this process, I don't think it'll slow us down any, will be to add a one-on-one meeting with each city council member at a certain point in time. I think it'll benefit you guys, but I know it'll benefit myself as well. So, the same process as before where you'll get the questionnaires and rate me on the various categories that have been established in the past. The staff will do the same. Ms. Tabor will collaborate, collect, and tally all that information. And then at some point in time, we'll add in a one-on-one interview that, or one-on-one discussion that I would like to have with each of you. And then we'll go through the recommendations, have a personnel committee meeting, have recommendations from them for salary increase, if any, and then go forward from there and prove it at a future council meeting, so. So that should be coming yet this week for you. And then the other item that I have is that I will be missing the, gladly missing with all the snow we're getting, gladly missing the March 4th city council meeting. I'll be down in Florida. And in my place, either Ms. Tabor or Mr. Grimm will be making council calls on Monday and running the meeting on that Monday night. So I just give you a heads up that I'll be gone. I'll be here through next Monday, and I'll be off for the next number of days after that, so.
Okay. Any other?
Mike, would you like me to officially give an update regarding staffing?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I just, I just.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
That I was thinking on the same page. So I just, I would, wanted to update the council and let you know that our building official has given his official resignation effective March 7th. Am I getting that correct? Thank you. We, I'm sorry, David and I worked with Mike, had a discussion, and we were able to post that immediately, because as I'm sure some of you recall, filling that position can be challenging. There's a lot of openings just in general across cities, and so we just wanted to act quickly on that. The posting is exactly identical to the posting that we made just over two years ago when we hired our current building official. So there's absolutely no changes to that past approved posting. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was, felt like they were in the loop on that, but we wanted to act quickly so we weren't delaying our ability to hire. It's just such a key role, so.
And I believe Jack is going to step in on an interim?
I'll let David speak to that a little bit.
We've contacted.
We've, yeah, we're not quite certain on that, Madam Mayor, but we're exploring options to make sure that we keep doing inspections and plans to go out the door.
Okay, all right. Keep it posted. All right, thank you. All right, any other staff reports? Otherwise, we'll move on to council reports. We'll start with Ms. Bruce.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Mr. Trumperland?
I'll be attending Pioneer, Sierra Creek this Thursday.
Okay, and?
LM City, we continue to discuss the harvesting for AIS and what next steps are. We have an RFP for some study to be done. We're taking feedback on that. And so I'm hoping that we can move in the direction to get some communication out as to what will or will not happen in the nineteen season here shortly.
Okay.
WCC meeting on the 14th of March. Come in.
Isn't it the 13th? I mean, so the, okay. So the WCC night with the community was scheduled for one of our lizard nights, and so they rescheduled it to March 13th, which is a Wednesday, so.
Right, and then my regular meeting is on the 14th.
Oh, okay, all right. So, just so you're aware, the night with the community is March 13th, and it's going to be held at the Performing Arts Center at West Tonka. It includes myself, the mayor from Mount, the mayor from Orano, and Kevin Borg, the superintendent from West Tonka School District, so. So thank you for doing that. So I just have a couple of things. I got a little thank you note from We Can, and it just says, "Thank you for your support of We Can's Community Development Block Grant Application. We're grateful for your partnership," from Kristy Larson. So, just thought I'd share that with you. I also went to the Northwest League, and our speakers were two gentlemen from the Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission and also the Hennepin County Youth Sports. And I have all this, I have a big packet here of information that I'm going to hand over to staff, because, so there's basically three grant possibilities. One is for sports facilities, one is for sports equipment. So if you need a backdrop, or you need a net, or baseball bases, something like that. And then the other one is for playground equipment. And so I think we should be looking at this, because I know we're replacing or improving or whatever. So I think it's in our best interest to look at these, especially for the equipment, and especially for the playground equipment, too, if we're planning on doing some things. So I'll pass this on to staff for that. And upcoming meetings, I know I'll be at the Planning Commission meeting Monday night, so we'll be swearing in some new commissioners. With that, I think we're, one thing. So, now we have a closed session meeting, so I'm going to have to ask everybody that's not part of the council to leave, because we are going to have a closed session meeting. Okay, so we're back. Is there a motion to reconvene?
No, you don't have to make a motion to reconvene. You can just.
Okay, so we're back in our regular council meeting after our closed session. The closed session.
I'm sorry.
Just waiting for you guys to finish up. The closed session, we discussed the purchase of real estate at located, or the PID number is 30-117-24-32-003 for the purpose of a water tower. So with that, and there's no, staff was given direction on that, and they will proceed with our direction. So with that, we are done with all of our business items, and we can be adjourned if the motion is made.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Thank you.